...out on. Action taken regarding student expulsions. For student case 1922, it was motioned by trustee Romo Flores and seconded by trustee Del Rey and carried unanimously to accept the request for a stipulated suspended expulsion. For student case 1923, it was motioned by trustee Del Rey and seconded by trustee Romo Flores and carried unanimously, again, to accept the stipulated suspended expulsion. Student case 1924, motioned by trustee Kiff and seconded by trustee Del Rey, carried unanimously to accept the request for a stipulated suspended expulsion. And finally, student case 1925, motioned by trustee Del Rey, seconded by trustee Romo Flores and carried unanimously to accept the findings of fact for the suspended expulsion case, and a motion by trustee Kiff and seconded by trustee Romo Flores, and accepted unanimously to accept the request for suspended expulsion. Okay, with that being said, good evening and welcome to the April Board of Trustees meeting. Thank you for all coming and thank you for those of you that are tuning into us. We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Del Rey, that is your cue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we are going to start this evening with a spotlight on innovation and hear about our junior internship. So, Mrs. Anderson would come on forward.
Hello.
Thank you, hello.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for being here.
It's exciting to have our students come get to speak to you guys, so we really appreciate that. Another successful internship program, can you hear me? In the right spot? Okay. Hundred and forty-five juniors went to seventy-one local businesses. Some got hired, one got fired. It was a great year. They learned how to shake hands and show up on time and not be on their cellphones. And it's interesting working with seniors now as a scholarship coordinator. I listened to seventeen interviews by Rotarians to scholarship candidates the last couple days, and at least half of them talked about their internship and how it changed what they wanted to now do going forward. One student today was talking about how he thought he wanted to be a civil engineer, and then he went to his internship with a civil engineer, and now he wants to be an electrical engineer. Jerry Endger was like, "Yes, we need more electrical engineers." And he just got into Berkeley. And so I think, you know, these experiences the kids are having are really helping them set their course in a really great way. So, I'm happy to answer questions at the end about general internship, but we have two really great students here to present their presentations to you, so you can see what they did on their internships. The first one is Ms. Rhea Paz.
Hello, good evening. My name is Rhea Paz. I'm a junior from Healdsburg High School, and I did my internship at the VCA Pet Care East Veterinary Hospital in Santa Rosa. VCA, short for Veterinary Centers of America. It was founded in 1986 on the west side of Los Angeles. It owns about eight hundred hospitals in forty-three states, in the United States, and five states in Canada. My mentor was Dr. Kim Henry. She's a technician and emergency specialist. She was generous to give us lessons of patients that come in with, in critical condition or have like little sickness that they have. A picture of that paw is called a hotspot, what golden retrievers get usually when they're allergic, and it's common for them to get it. And the way to treat it is to give them a prescription of ointment. And she takes care, she takes care of serious cases or patients that come in in damaged conditions and they need someone to, to keep an eye on them. My first day, I was, on my first day, I shadowed two technician nurses. Their names were Ari and Letty. They gave us a tour around the building. I got to see dental rooms, surgeon rooms, X-ray rooms, ICUs, suite rooms, and X-ray rooms, which is pretty cool. It's like an average hospital for humans, but for pets. There is a lot amount of staffs in there, which is pretty great, because they use like this method of having partners besides them, so they can help each other on a patient and knowing what, they can think together, knowing what, how they can solve the problem to take care of the patient and what they need for its health. It's also a teaching hospital, which is great, because I got to see some new technicians come in and know the way of how to do the work in, like, in becoming a veterinarian. My routine was to shadow, observe my mentor. The only days I would see her were only on Fridays, so on Thursdays, I would go and shadow some nurses and the technicians. I got to help sometimes during the day, but they had really strict rules for us, so we couldn't really do much. We weren't supposed to do hands-on things, just observe and do examinations on the patients. They were generous to take some of our questions, but it was really difficult for us to give out questions, because they're always on fast pace. Like, it's moving fast to take in patients and treat them, and also knowing what's going on, and also getting the patient in and out of the hospital. I got to see a lot of vaccinations and ultrasounds, which was pretty cool, because now I know how they do them. For ultrasounds, they use this buddy method to secure the dog, so the dog wouldn't worry so much on what's going around them and feel uncomfortable on what they're doing. The thing they do most there is collecting data, so they transform what they're doing to paper, and they transfer that to computers, so it'll be easier for them when the patient comes back again for a checkup, or for some reason it's sick again, they can pull up those files and see what the patient needs and doesn't need. The surgery room was pretty cool to me, because I got to see some surgeries. I got to see two amputations and a splamectomy, which was pretty awesome. I got to see, I mean, we're not, we're not the patient, but knowing how they do it was pretty cool. I got to see an amputation of a little small dog that had tumors on its left leg, which was pretty sad, because they had to amputate it, and there was no way to get those tumors out. And a splamectomy was on a pit bull's spleen. It was huge. It was like, you can also feel it when she was under anesthesia, so you can just see, like, feel a big ball on her spleen just there. I got to see that from start to finish, was pretty awesome, because I was learning the steps how to do it, and also knowing what to do while the patient's under anesthesia. There is also an anesthesiologist that calculates its heartbeat and breath levels, because sometimes while patients are under anesthesia, they, like, lose control of their breathing, so they have to do the breathing for them. And also, since it is a teaching hospital, I saw a surgeon, like, teaching his assistant surgeon there, knowing the ways to do sutures and where to locate, where to cut in a patient and what not to cut. One more. One more? Okay. Some days would be really busy, so I would wait an hour in the waiting room for one of the nurses to come in and take me in to start my day. And while I was waiting, I got to read these handy books of dogs, pictures of dogs, which was really cute, and some quotes that, like, kind of make up my day at times. And a book that's there also had, like, ways to know how to identify when your dog is not feeling right. And for that is pretty good, because it makes you more cautious about your, like, dog, family member, and how to know when it's right to take him in. One more? There. The working environment was pretty friendly, because all the staff members there know us, and I had some nice conversation with some doctors there, which was pretty cool, and some storytelling, which is awesome. I got to know of this little heroic dog that came in having a redwood stick stuck in its heart. So they had him there for three minutes, and those three minutes, he died suddenly, and they did everything that they can. So they did a, they had to open up his chest to restart his heart, which they did. And after that, they did the surgery on taking out the redwood, redwood stick out of his heart. During that procedure, he went blind, but also lived twelve more years, which was pretty cool. They, they work in a fast pace, because it's, since it is a 24/7 hospital, it's open for 24/7, I mean, 24 hours. You see patients coming in and now, and treating these patients, knowing what they need. And also, they're in a time limit, so it's always fifteen minutes with the patient in the room and its owner, so the owners wouldn't be so concerned and ask a lot of questions. And they just, the mentor and the doctors just need to know quickly what to do with the patient and know what's, what they're going to do with, and how they're going to proceed on doing that. Also, one cool thing is I like how they also comfort the patients there that are coming out of surgery or are going into surgery, so they wouldn't be so scared on what's going on around them and what's going to happen to them. My favorite thing about this was surgery, because I got to see a lot of, like, how they do procedures and how different procedures are done differently. Also, the different diagnoses on dogs that come in while they're in procedures. So if a dog is under anesthesia, they got to know what they're going to do to the dog, so they have to go through their files and know what not to do and what to do, so they wouldn't complicate things for the patient and for them. So they wouldn't come, so the patient wouldn't come back again for another surgery. And I want to thank Mr., my doctor, no, my mentor, Dr. Henry, and Mrs. Anderson, and the HEF for this great experience and opportunity to have. Thank you, and any questions?
That was a wonderful presentation. Thank you for sharing with us. I'm curious, you sounded very excited. Is this still the course that you would like to pursue or the field you'd like to pursue?
Yes, on animals, yes, but during my present, my internship, I was more focused on surgery. So that was pretty awesome, of knowing how the surgeon did his job, and which is, which was really cool to see. And also, just knowing how to treat the animal differently from other, other doctors are there, also, like, taking care of the patients.
Good, great.
And you weren't, you didn't get lightheaded or nauseous from the surgery?
No.
Good, that's a good sign.
Yeah. I kind of like prepared myself, because there's this one show that I really like watching, which is all about doctors and surgery, so I think that kind of helped me, but I knew that I wasn't going to be also nauseous about being in the room while they were starting the procedure.
I'm curious, what surprised you the most about this experience?
The animals, because I just see animals coming in, which are like cute, but also knowing how to take care of them professionally is really awesome to see.
Great, good job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I think you can come on up with our next presentation.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rowan Affronti, and I'm going to present about my internship at the Healdsburg Museum. And before we begin, I'd like to thank my mentors, Holly and Lauren, for coming here tonight. And I'd like to pass around a few papers that I, that are relevant to my internship.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations for the museum.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess we'll begin. So this is my experience at the Healdsburg Museum. So like I mentioned before, I had two mentors, which were Polly Hood and Lauren. And again, thank you for being here. The place was the Healdsburg Museum and Historical Society, which is actually right up the street from here. It's a beautiful old building, as you can see in that picture. And the timeframe was a Thursday and Friday for three weeks. So, a little bit of background on me, you might wonder why I would be interested in history. So I have a passion, I guess you could say, for US world and local history. That picture of me on the rock next to the monument is me at Gettysburg National Military Park, and that's the monument of the 20th Maine, who is the group I reenact with. And that other picture is me in my reenacting uniform, so that's something I do about once a month. It's a big part of my life, and it's why I love history so much. So the overview, the Healdsburg Museum is honestly one of the only places I know, and our town is the only one, town is the only place I know that has such an institution like this. I have friends all over the county and none of the towns have a museum or historical society quite like ours. So it's an old Carnegie library, and that has lots of historical significance that I'm not going to get into now, but if you'd like to learn, you could come to the Healdsburg Museum. We can tell you all about it. It's run mostly by volunteers and a few staff. So, my first day, I was a little nervous, not going to lie. I met quite a few people, most of them volunteers. I learned a lot of names, and I forgot a lot of names. So that was a little bit of an awkward experience, but they were very understanding. I got an outline of what my duties would be. So they included a few things. One of those was writing a short little article, which is in that paper that will hopefully be passing around, about a local photographer who was a high schooler nearly a hundred years ago, and more on that later. And I was also helping with the current exhibit called A Sense of Place, and that's a lot of pictures, both modern and from the 1800s, about Healdsburg. So that was pretty interesting, to find out I would be doing a lot of hands-on work compared to some other internships where they would be more observing. I also learned about research tools and aids. So one of the first things I got to do was poke around in a database filled with almost all of the museum's collections. So that was images of artifacts, letters, pictures. It was quite spectacular to see all of that compiled into one database. And I got to interact with some artifacts. In that picture, I'm holding the journal of Mervyn Silberstein, who I wrote the article on, and that's over a hundred years old, so that's why I'm wearing those nice little white gloves, too. So the second day, this might not sound exciting, but I studied old tax records, and I know that, I just did my taxes, so I know that's not very exciting to do, but it was really interesting what, I was working with Lauren on this. What we were doing is we were tracing back the original owner of a property for the Historic Homes Tour in Healdsburg. So it was, for somebody who loves history, almost a fun little adventure to go back. And I think we made it into the 18, late 1800s, so that was very interesting for me. So after that, I got to curate a small exhibit. That's me in the, putting my curation into a small glass cabinet. And the other picture is me setting up the curation. So I got to interact with some very beautiful Homo Indian gift baskets, which are so small you cannot really see them, but that's what I'm messing around with on the pedestal. And I put those in a tasteful display, so people could see them and learn about their historical significance. And finally, I started taking pictures of the exhibit, and like I said earlier, that was the Sense of Place, which is a bunch of pictures. And so I was taking pictures for the brochure and the exhibit guide. So, this was my fir, that was my first week. I was very excited to come back. I was looking forward to that Thursday. So I started writing the draft of my Silberstein essay, and I met with those two volunteers to talk about his life and the significance he had in our town. Just a little bit of quick background, Silberstein was one of the first commercial photographers for Healdsburg. He was a pretty well-known local man around here. So the whole part where I come in is we have his journal from his last month at Healdsburg High School from 1903. So what we're doing, what I was doing is I'm writing my impressions about this man who was almost my age, more than a hundred years ago. So like I said, that's what I wrote, and that's getting passed around right now. And I met with some more volunteers. Like I said, there's quite a bit of them, so. And I helped organize and take more pictures. My second day, I continued to work on my draft. There's a picture of me looking very pensive while writing, that may or may not be staged. I photographed a lot more pictures, and I made my Facebook post of all time. So it's a little hard to read, but it's just a basic explanation of what I'm doing at the museum. So this was pretty exciting. This was, sorry, can you go back? Yeah, sorry, go ahead. Sorry about that. This was pretty exciting, because I made a second Facebook post, and this happened to be Valentine's Day. So the museum has a large record of old Valentine's Day cards, and that one in the picture is one from the 40s, I believe, and the whole gimmick is you can move the arm, but the eyes go all white when you move the arm. So it's, it was rather unsettling to see this. And I don't know if you can read it, but there was this inscription on it that was a weird little poem about being on a ship with this interesting-looking Valentine's Day card. So that was also a little disturbing. I responded to my Facebook post, which got a lot of nice comments, so that was a good way to start my day. And that other picture is me winding an antique clock. So this is, this clock is something that I have only seen in old cartoons, and it's one of those clocks that has a lever and you swing it, and so it makes that beautiful, loud ticking sound. So I learned how to wind that. And in that journal is a little bit of a story about a guy who restored that clock or one like it, so that's another interesting read. So this was my last day here. I was pretty, pretty sad, because I really liked my time there, but that has a happy ending, so more on that later. But I got to work the front desk. As you can see, it's rather large. I think that was so the librarians could intimidate people at the time, but I looked very official behind it. I submitted my Silberstein article, and I took photograph, I finished my last photograph, and now I'm going to get to one of the more frustrating parts of my internship, which was taking the pictures of pictures. So that picture there is in a glass frame, and as you might know, glass does not, glass reflects very well. So I spent a few days trying to figure out how I could possibly take this picture and make it look good with no reflection. And I finally figured out, you can take it outside and put it on a neutral-ish background, and then you get no glare. So that was my big aha moment at my internship. So it might not look good, but it was cropped, all the ugly green backing was cropped, so it just looks like a nice picture. So an overview of my tasks, I did social media outreach with my Facebook posts, I did research, I photographed a lot of the current exhibits, I wrote an article, and I interacted with the volunteers and the public. So a big thank you to Ms. Anderson, HEF, and my mentors. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Good job.
That was great, and I did see your Facebook post, holding the diary. What are you thinking about, like, I know you're only a junior, and I'm not trying to put any pressure on you, but post-high school, something around history, I assume, or what are you thinking about?
Yeah, my, my dream would be to go to a liberal arts college and major in history, so that's hopefully, and this internship has just reinforced that I can major in history, and there are places like the Healdsburg Museum, these small little institutions that would have a histor, a need of a historian, even if it's just part-time.
Do you think that you would try to go back and volunteer at all while you're still here for this next year? Is that, is there a capacity for that?
Yeah, like I said, I was pretty sad to leave, but it does have a happy end, and I've been invited back. And currently, I'm researching the Civil War Colonel, which is Colonel Matheson, who was a pretty big deal here. And I'm researching some of the original letters we have. So that's my project right now. I hope to continue that.
That is excellent.
Congratulations on being published, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to read this, it's fascinating.
Very good.
Can we hang on to that?
Can we keep this?
Thank you.
Do you want us to give it back to Mrs. Anderson when we're done? Okay, perfect. Thank you, Rowan, so much.
I know we kind of ran over our time, so I just wanted to check in one last time, see if you guys have any questions for me about the program. If not, we'll let you get on with your next.
I'd just like to say thank you. It's just such a great experience for the kids, and.
My pleasure.
Yeah, it's life-changing.
And I have to say, year after year after year, it just gets better. The students get stronger with their skill set going into the jobs and being ready for whatever challenges are ahead of them, and the presentations get stronger and stronger every year as the students are practicing, and, you know, these oral presentation skills are now woven into so much of their curriculum. You just, I don't know, from, since, from being involved with this from the first years, it's, you still see every year just this blossoming of the program and of, especially the students in these opportunities. So thank you. A lot of that is you and your dedication.
There's 148 more stories like those two that are tonight, which is what's so fantastic about it. I love, the kids now look forward to it. Like, they start talking about freshman year, what they're going to do during their junior internship, so something kids really look forward to in the school, and I'm glad everybody has a good experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I just wanted, wanted to remind folks that if you would like to make a comment either on a non-agenda item or an agenda item... or an agenda item, there's some yellow cards in the back and you're welcome to fill those out and bring those up front here, and we will call on you at the appropriate time. So... Now we're here for the internship? And if anyone is here and has seen and done what they wanted to see and do, you are welcome to leave. It won't offend us when you walk out. So you're welcome to stay, but if you came to see someone present and they have presented, you're welcome to go. All right, we do have a comment on a non-agenda item. Chris Van den Hoogel?
So it's my pleasure to introduce you all to Wayne Yamagishi, who is our interim principal at H E S currently. So Wayne, thanks for being here. Wayne, as you know, Sue Simon had a previously planned trip and she is, Wayne, you were on your own today, right? First day. Yeah, so today, Sue actually leaves tomorrow, but she'll be in South Africa for a couple of weeks and Wayne will be filling in. He has been here for, I don't know, four or five days already. Wednesdays, so staff and parents are referring to him as Wednesday Wayne, but Wayne is now breaking out of Wednesday. So we're happy to have him. He's a retired principal from Oak Grove most recently and has worked extensively also as a principal-coach through a variety of means. So we're, we're in very good hands and really pleased that he's in charge right now. So thanks, Wayne.
Great, thank you. Welcome. We're glad to have you. All right, we're going to move on and have an approval of the consent agenda. Before we do that, I just wanted to publicly thank those that have donated to our different programs at the high school and throughout our district. So thank you very much. I think they're, yep, they're up here on our donation slide. So thank you, thank you very much. There's lots of good stuff going on as well. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Should we just like rotate?
I know, we're just going to have one back and forth, yeah.
All right, so moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, thank you. We'll move on. All right, do we have any cards for comments on?
None on non-agenda items.
On, okay. All right, moving on to item 11.1, student learning. We have a report.
Hello.
Hello, Erin.
My name is Erin Ryan. I am the E L coordinator for the district, as well as leading the students at the junior high. Are you going to click? It's not working. Okay. All right. So I'm here to talk about LPAC. Last year was the first school year that we gave the LPAC. It replaced the CASP test.
CELT.
CELT, sorry, thank you.
CASP is happening now.
All right, so LPAC stands for English Language Proficiency Assessments of California. And, keep going, sorry. LPAC and CELT are pretty different, so it's hard for us to compare apples to apples. So when we look at the data tonight, there's not going to be a year-over-year comparison. Starting next year, there will be. Our students are currently taking LPAC right now. Junior high and F M C and high school are all finished up. And H E S is going to start next week. So, um, the LPAC is broken up, there's a few different scores to pay attention to. So there's an overall score. And the overall score is the big number that's reflected up there. And I'll actually, I have some copies of an example of what the score sheet looks like. I'll bring those over. And this is just an example here that's on the screen, right?
Yeah, it shows on the, like, kind of what it looks like to parents, too.
It's basically what's up on the screen, but just formatted a little bit differently. So you have your overall score, and that's produced by two sub-scores. You have an oral language score and a written language score. The oral language is comprised of listening and speaking subdomains. And written language is comprised of reading and writing subdomains. So the overall score is on a scale of one to four. And the subdomains are on a score of one to three. So it's a little confusing, but if you look up there, you can see down under, like, under oral language, for example, you have a listening section and a speaking section. And those are all categorized as either beginning somewhat slash moderately or well-developed. And same thing for the reading and writing. And then once those scores are compiled, then you get that overall level one through four score. And we can go on to the next one. I presented this at a few ELACs as well, so that's why it's bilingual. So the level score, these are, these are going to be the well-developed English skills. These are the kids that are either ready to be reclassified or are very close, depending on if they've met the other criteria. And we'll discuss that a little bit later. The LPAC levels are used to inform E L D instruction and also to inform placement in E L D classes at the secondary level. And then down below, you can see the E L D standards, the proficiency levels, and how they compare with levels one through four. So it doesn't quite align. You can see between level two and four, there's a little bit of an overlap between the expanding and the bridging. And so that can help teachers when they're planning out their lessons to support English learners. Okay, so how did we do? These are the, the pie chart shows how our district scored overall. So this is pre-K through 12th grade. And it shows the percentages of where students scored overall. And so we had 328 students test last year. And we had 129, which is, you know, 40% score in the well-developed range, which is really great. When you take into account how we compared with Sonoma County, we performed slightly higher than the county. The, we were at about 40, 41% well-developed. The county was at 34% well-developed. If you combine levels three and four, we were at about 75% of our students scoring at either moderately or well-developed. And the county was at 71. As compared to the state, the state was at 30% well-developed and 35% moderately. I compare, also compared with a few local districts, I looked at Windsor, Sonoma Valley, and Cloverdale. And we're still performing higher than a lot of those districts. Windsor was at 20% well-developed, Sonoma Valley at 31, and Cloverdale at 35. So the next slide breaks us down. This is district-wide again. This is oral language versus written language. And you'll notice that oral language is definitely a strength for our district. So this is, on the bottom, you have what students scored, so level one through level four. And so we had a high majority of students scoring at level four in the oral language area. So I think we're doing some really good things as far as oral language goes, but it also highlights some, you know, areas for growth. These are, district-wide, the, the subdomain score is broken down. So for listening, 51% of our kids were scoring in the well-developed area as opposed to the, as compared to the county, which was at 48. Speaking, we had 60%, reading 30%, and writing 38% of our students. And all of those subdomains were still performing over county average. Now by school. So this is Healdsburg Elementary and Healdsburg Charter School combined. We opted to not disaggregate that information because there's just, there's too few students at H C S in order to make the data statistically significant. But if you do break it down, the numbers are pretty similar, with H E S actually performing a little bit higher as far as the number of students in the well-developed category. So you can take a look there at, you have the grade and you also have the number of students tested in each grade. So you can see in TK and kindergarten, for example, there were 57%, I'm sorry, 57 students tested. We had 42% in the well-developed category. And then going up through, first grade was 55, second grade 55%, all the way up through fifth grade, which was at 53%. Another thing to note about this slide is that our classes overall, our E L classes have, our classes in general have been getting smaller. And the number of kids taking the test each year is dropping because of the amount of kids that we're reclassifying. Here are the junior high numbers. So you'll notice that the numbers here continue to get a little smaller. We had 21 students in sixth grade, 30 students in seventh grade. That was, that's a big class. That's our eighth grade class this year, and there's over, over about 140 kids in that class. So it makes sense that that number is a little bit bigger. And then our eighth grade class, there were only nine E L students left last year. And a few of, quite a few of them reclassified. So this data is all, by the way, it's all from 2018. So it'll be really interesting to see how we compare with the data for this year. And here is Healdsburg High School. So you can see here, the numbers continue to, to drop as far as students who are still receiving English language support. The students at this point are either, they're new to the country or new to the area, or they're long-term English learners at this point. And there were a lot of reclassifications that happened last year at the high school as well. So the, this is the criteria for reclassifying. It recently underwent a change and this document reflects that change. So in order to reclassify, a student needs to score on the LPAC an overall four. So that is a new change as of a couple of months ago. There's a teacher evaluation portion, parental opinion consultation. So we always consult with the parents. We invite them in to have a meeting if we believe that the student is ready to reclassify. And then there's the comparison of performance on basic skills. For K through three, that's going to look like D R A, Star Literacy Assessments, measuring, you know, are they at benchmark? And in grades four through nine and 12, we can use the CASP E L A assessment. And so it must be within the upper 50% of the scale score in the standard nearly met range. And the numbers for each specific grade level are listed up there. And so once a student can meet all four of those criteria, we recommend them for reclassification. And that's it, actually. So a couple of things to note is that the data, the reclassification, actually, the, the scores for LPAC, they changed the scores a little bit. So the threshold to earn a three, the threshold to earn a four is changed a little bit this, this test window. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, how that shakes out and how we compare. But do you have any other, do you have any questions for me about the data?
I have a question. The overall LPAC score four means that you basically are doing, are scoring threes in all four of those subcategories.
Yes. Well, you can get, you can get a four.
It is possible to get a sub-score of a two and still get a four. But the State Board of Ed at the C D E voted in January that an overall four, no matter what is going on with the subscores, is what they ruled on. So we finally, I've been talking on this forum about getting some guidance. This is the guidance, this is what they've told us. But it is numerically possible to get a two and still...
You probably have a couple really high threes and then...
Yeah, and that's why we look at other things, right?
And I'm curious from both of you, was there anything, I know it's the first one, we don't have comparison, we're not quite sure, kind of stands alone right now, but was there anything that really jumped out at you as something we might want to be looking at more closely? Or, I don't know, little red, little mini-red flags or things to keep an eye on?
Something that I mentioned earlier that I, I thought was interesting is the difference between our oral language and our written language scores. So I think we're, we're doing really great things with oral language. So it would be important for us to look and see how we can boost written language instruction, the reading and the writing.
Yeah, listening and speaking always comes first. That's normal in how all people learn. The, the reading and the writing is something that we're working and spending more time on. As Erin said, our program for English language development, we've got kids speaking and producing language. It's part of the 50/50 principle. But getting our kids reading and writing more is definitely a push for us.
Because I even thought, even the reading more than the writing a little bit, right? Okay.
And you had mentioned the, the high school scores. Are those predominantly students that are relatively new to the district or new to the country? These are not necessarily kids that just have never reclassified, that have been with us.
Both. So we have 21 English language learners at the high school today. Six of those are newcomers. They're within two, three years. The remainder are, the 15 are long-term English language learners. They've been with us for six or more years. Part of what we're going to do next year is our R F E P mentor at the high school is going to have a bit more on his plate. This will be his fourth year. And we're going to add E L long-term, long-term advisement to his duties. So he'll be doing some case management and working with those kids and their families a little bit more closely.
That's nice. That seems like a number we'd certainly like to see lower, for their benefit, for sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that.
Real quickly, I want to thank Erin Ryan. She has done a tremendous job. This is not easy. It was a new test. We'd get things from the California Department of Ed like two days before. We needed to train 20 people and say, oh wait, no, it's different. And here's a 400-page booklet that you have to digest to train everybody else. You have done an amazing job. It's, I literally have not had to really do much of anything, which in my world is awesome. So thank you very much. You have done an amazing job from, as you said, pre-K through high school, training our folks, super organized. Nobody's complaining. It's been as organized it's ever been. So thank you very much.
And for a clear presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Erin. All right, we are moving on to 11.1B, History and Social Science Adoption. Ms. Erin Fender.
So I was here last time with Mr. Thomas Worf, one of our members of the History Social Science Department at the high school, providing some information and discussion around adoption of materials for the high school. This is an action item. We're asking you to go ahead and approve the ability for us to purchase and adopt the T C I curriculum for World History, U S History, Government, and Economics. So we can get this stuff ordered in the teacher's hands, have them start reviewing it, and be prepared for full implementation in the 1920 school year.
Okay, great. May I ask for a motion to adopt the T C I curriculum for World History, et cetera? In a second. All right, any discussion? I think, yeah, the last, last meeting, Mr. Worf squeaked in before we had to dismiss. I, I thought that that was great support for moving on. Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we'll take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion passes. Thank you, Erin. All right, moving on to 11.1C, H U S D Equity Task Force. Mr. Van den Hoogel?
So a quick update. We are nearing the end of the Listening Campaign for the Equity Task Force. We had a meeting on April 2nd. It was our second meeting, looking at the results of our town halls and various other inputs that we've gotten from the community and staff. And we are going to be looking at those and refining action recommendations May 8th. We were supposed to meet on the 24th, but there's an event going on through HEF for the Kindergarten to College Program. And so we, we moved the Equity Task Force because a number of us wanted to be able to attend. So we're meeting on May 8th. We will be, as I said, looking at some final recommendations to make. So at the May board meeting, you can expect to be a little more depth to my presentation. Some of the things we are talking about, I'll give you a preview. Having, whether we call them parent outreach coordinators or bilingual community liaisons at all schools. So we currently have a parent outreach coordinator at the elementaries. We don't at the high school or junior high. Just to make sure that we have a clearinghouse and a central place for Spanish-speaking parents to come to the school to know where they can get information and help us be able to broadcast information out, just so that we know that the flow of information is robust for everybody. So that's one idea. We're, we're kicking around the idea of potentially combining kindergarten for the traditional H E S and H C S programs. Kindergarten is kindergarten. There's not a whole lot of difference in instruction. And if we were to keep P B L, which is sort of the essence of what differentiates our charter from other schools, and incorporate it into all our kindergarten classes, we would be able to accomplish smaller class size. We'd be able to have more of a representative student body in every class. And we're actively working with HEF at the potential of having aides in the kindergarten classes, too. So it could be a real big win across the board and accomplish a lot of the things that we would like to do. So look for things like that coming down. We're also going to be recommending some working groups. I believe two of them will be around elementary configuration, taking a long-term look at how our elementary system is configured and getting some community input around how we might want to change that and if we want to change that. And then also embracing and, and learning how to communicate the value of diversity in our schools and community and doing some work around that with our parents and with the community at large. So again, more details coming in the May board meeting, but I want to give you a preview. And we will, we'll have more definitive information after May 8th. Any questions?
I had a question about the creation of the working groups. How are you pulling folks in? What is the...
So we haven't, we haven't gotten that far yet, but it'll be wider. It won't just be simply people on Equity Task Force. So there'll be wider stakeholder involvement. So talking with interested staff and parents and opening it up to really dive deeper into these specific issues.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to School Business, 11.2. We have a report on the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and a familiar face in the audience.
So it's my pleasure to introduce David Jones, who's the president of our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. And then we found this guy on the street.
He's trouble.
He is trouble.
Nothing but trouble.
And he knew a thing or two about bonds in Hillsburg. And so he has also, Vince already graciously agreed to join the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and wanted to come and say hi and be part of the presentation today. So thank you both for being here, appreciate it.
Welcome both, thank you. All right.
Okay. So we're both here in front of you today as members on the Hillsburg Bond Oversight Measure D Committee. I'm a parent of the school system. And Vince, you are?
Business and at-large.
Business and at-large.
I cover a few top nonprofits.
Not the senior citizen, though, right?
Depends on how you define it.
Not yet, not yet.
No, that's Jerry Anderson.
There you go. And I've listed our members up here who are also part of our board. The general obligation bonds that, or for the, well, I'll give you a little history. The district received authorization at an election held November 2016 to issue bonds in the district in an aggregate principal amount to exceed $67 million to finance specific construction and renovation projects approved by eligible voters within the district. The proposition required approval by about 55% at least of the votes cast by eligible voters. The bonds represent the first issuance of the authorized bonds issued under the 2016 authorization. So the purpose of the issuance was originally for bonds being issued to finance the repair, upgrading, acquisition, construction, equipping of certain district property and facilities and pay the costs of issuing the bonds. We fit in as one of the requirements to appoint a bond, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. There are also the commitment of the school to, district to conduct an annual independent financial audit and performance audit of the findings of how the funds are spent. So I'm here to report to you today on those findings. We got together as a group last week to review the audit measures and also take a walk of the school. And that's one of our requirements, to see that the funds are actually being put to the right use and the completion of those projects are seen, so we can tell the money's flowing in the right directions. We are just to verify that the audit's being produced, to view the audits and also look at the materials presented to us from those auditors. And so the other two items that we need to do, besides informing the public, which we're doing today, is to review those expenditures and then annually, with the report produced to us from the audit, bring any findings that we'd find out of place to the, to the public. Coming from the audit, the auditor selected a sample of expenditures and with supporting documentation to ensure that funds were properly expended in specific projects listed in the ballot text. Their audit included 12 transactions that we reviewed this last meeting, totaling a little over $6 million. And it represented about almost 75% of the assets spent of $8,557. And the conclusion of the auditor was, and I'll read this in, from their writing, "The results of our test indicated that in all significant respects, the Hillsburg Unified School District has properly accounted for the expenditures held in the building fund, the general obligation bond measure D, and that such expenditures were made for authorized bond projects." So that was our verification from the auditor. Any questions?
I don't have any. Thank you for your work and your time. We appreciate that very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you both. I think it's interesting to be on the other side, see how this side works, but I think the district can rest very assured having the admin, and I see Steve's not here tonight, but just, we're in such good hands. And as you guys know, the audit runs $40,000, $50,000 to audit us each year. About $10,000 of that is specifically for the bond and for the bond expenditures and things like that. And I applaud you as the district, you can spend bond money to pay for the bond audit, but you don't. You pay for it out of the school funds and I applaud you for keeping the bond money flowing to the projects. But I think overall, having Steve and Chris and the rest of the admin as a bail safe, we've all been to CSBA, we've heard the horror stories about the other districts, and it's really neat to see how the other side's working so well. And I miss you guys.
Thanks for your perspective, Vince. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and thank you both for your time and efforts and this is much appreciated. Thanks, David.
And you know when we meet, Vince, you can come back and visit. Yeah, really, have a seat. All right, thank you very much. All right, let's see, Mr. Vanden Hoogel, are you up?
Yeah, so the next item is actually the bond audit reports that Mr. Jones reported on. So there were no findings in those reports. And so you would be voting to accept those.
Okay, we are going to consider accepting the 2017, 2018 Financial Audit Report for the performance audit for Measure D. May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, construction update.
So it's been a while, but we have Tanya Dale here from Counterpoint Construction, who is here to talk about the summer and beyond in terms of construction going on in the district.
Hi, guys.
Hey, when we see you, we know things are happening.
I know. Been, been a while, but it was just a good time to come, update you, and I'm going to be sending some stuff back next month for you to vote on, so. So just really quickly, we're going to cover the projects that we're working on this summer and those projects are listed here. That's the new gym at the high school and locker rooms, new locker rooms for the girls and renovation of the boys' locker room. And then the, it's kind of weird, it's called Building A at the high school, but it's really the admin building and the cafeteria building. It's the last piece on the campus that needed roofing and HVAC replacement. So this is just a reminder of what our, what our new gym looks like. So does this thing have a, kind of, right here, this is our existing gym, existing boys' locker room, and I know you guys are looking at the screen, but then, I know, sorry. But above that, we've got the new gym, new locker room. We've got the, if you remember, we talked about the, as I lovingly have called it, the yoga lawn. So we have synthetic turf between the Smith Robinson Gym and the new gym. That'll be good for like little pickup soccer, volleyball, PE, all those kinds of things. And then just the rest of the development of the site work around the gym. One thing that I'm really excited about is there's that space between the main classroom building and the existing Smith Robinson Gym, that's kind of like a little drive and it's just sort of nice work for it. Yeah, it's just there. But we're actually fixing all that up, again, making, this is sort of the last piece around the campus on that end that will have nice little seat walls, little places that teachers can take out and do breakout classes and all of that. So that will actually become a really pleasant space and that isn't really that now. And then the other, where am I clicking? Uh-oh.
Where's the walkway to the baseball field and track?
It's to the left of the new, so the new gym's shaded light gray and then you have the existing boys' locker room.
So you see the edge of the track, you see that curve?
Yeah.
That's the edge of the track there.
So there's four planter boxes in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So to, so where it looks kind of like a, we call a hammerhead, but you drive down the grove on this side and then you go along the bottom of the field and then if you just kept driving, you'd drive out towards, what's that street there? Montevista.
So, but I mean, so to get out to like where the baseball field is, you're, we're just going straight? Or that way?
Yeah. And I can, for those, so right here.
Straight at, you're right. You would go up.
Tennis courts.
You'd go left to the tennis courts, out over this way.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, it's not working. Also included in this project was the, so the upper top corner there you see, that's the senior court. We are redoing that and it's in desperate need of some freshening up.
Some love, yeah. You just go in.
Yeah, it's where they've been painting over and like literally, there's probably 25, 30 layers of paint there. But so what we're doing is, right now it's kind of this fishbowl that goes down, we're actually raising it, so it'll all be flat, putting in a nice area of synthetic turf, sort of like you have by the culinary area with some nice seat walls around it. And again, you've got classrooms on all sides of that. So again, great places for teachers to be able to go outside or send, you know, small group instruction, that kind of stuff. So that'll get done and then redoing the landscaping around the district office there. A lot of that came from, it needs a little freshening up, but we also learned our lesson with redwoods near trees, or redwood trees near buildings and with what we went through at Smith Robinson, want to get those out of there before they really start damaging the building. So cleaning that area up.
So that used to be sort of a patio back there, or is that just dead space right now that's being?
What are you talking about?
What are you talking about, the admin?
Yeah, sort of back by the loading dock?
Dead space is a good word for it.
Yeah. It used to be like, I think it was intended to originally be like a staff outdoor area.
But it never really?
Not so much.
Is it enclosed or is it open?
It was enclosed like five or six years ago?
We took it down.
Yeah, but we took the fence down.
So right now it's just all outdoor, but we're going to just develop it so that again, it's, get the redwoods out of there.
Nothing too fancy.
Nothing too fancy, just nice enough.
Kind of not usable space by the school, really, or is it?
From the room, there's doors directly to it. So from A7, which is the classroom that it's adjacent to, which was originally supposed to be the staff room years ago.
Right.
So it is a usable space for different things. But again, we're not putting too much attention or funds towards that.
Yeah, I mean, I know it looks like really busy, those are just easily to maintain kind of plants like we have around the rest of the campus. So, and freshening up again, that center area.
The island.
Where the flagpole is. The flagpole's actually going to move, that's one of the things. The flagpole's actually going to move to in front of the high school. And we're, we're getting rid of the sign that sort of is confusing where the front of the high school is and actually making it clear that the front of the high school is there and that this is the district office. So trying to make sure that it's a little bit more clear when you come on campus. Okay. Again, this is the roof of the, that, the upper right-hand side is the cafeteria and then the admin below. This is the last piece of roof mechanical that hasn't been done at this campus. And we have some pretty decent leaks in the admin right now and in the cafeteria, so taking care of this this summer as well. So projects we have been planning, the big one right now is the junior high gym modernization and STEM classroom, which is slated to start construction next year. And so we're heavy into design development of that. We have said, had some added scope and the roof of the NPR and the HVAC was originally going to be part of a project that was done at the junior high four years ago when we did all that work there, but because of budget constraints, did not happen. But it's still needed, it's really needed. And so we're going ahead and doing that. We're also going to just paint the exterior of the NPR so that it's not the only thing on campus that won't match after the gym project is done. And then we are doing the design for the field replacement, design only, it's not funded right now, but just doing the design. So again, and this is slightly changed recently, but this just gives you an overall, these are the areas that are colored are the areas that we're modernizing. On the upper right-hand, or upper left-hand side is the new STEM classroom. It's really exciting to be able to not have to build the electric car on the stage. They'll be able to now have this great STEM classroom where they can pull it in, work on it, there'll be space outside for it to be stored. And then redoing the band room, redoing the gym. We're actually, if you've ever known, you may, may or may not have noticed, but on the street side of the gym, there used to be windows and those got infilled several years ago. We're going to open those back up and get some nice good natural light back in the gym so it's not so dungeon-y. And then redoing the locker rooms, adding some storage, that kind of stuff. So I pulled a slide that we kind of used in 2016 when all this was, when we were master planning and I just wanted to kind of use the same slide and then show you where we're at. So we have completed all of the first bond sale projects at this point. We've, we finished Phase Two a couple of years ago, we did the AG site prep and we did the track, obviously, last year. That was where we had, and I'm happy to report that that's, that's our final number. We, 7.6 million rather than 10, so.
Ooh.
Chris wants to spend it already, but I'm telling him no. No, it's, it's exciting. So we've kind of finished that and we're into our 2019 bond sale and that's the, the projects that I just went over. And so those will be our next couple of years. Obviously, we have some things that we're adding and so that, the good, bad part of that is we had some savings. That'll cover some of the things that we need to do at the junior high that we weren't planning on doing originally. And the, the, the next sale will actually be in 2022. And so the last items in that bond sale is, was planned as the auditorium, converting the high school locker, the girls' high school locker room, once the new one is built, to the weight room and then redoing the baseball fields in natural turf. It was not synthetic turf when we wanted to be budgeted for this. And then a little bit of work at the, the high school parking lot outside the pool. So again, same thing, this is just giving you sort of timeframes of when those projects are going to happen, just to remind everybody what we're looking at. We'll probably need to start planning for the new projects, fall, spring of next year, just to start getting going. But they're not funded till that 2022 bond sale, so we obviously won't be doing any actual construction then. So for those of you who weren't here when we master-planned, I just wanted to throw this out for you guys. This gives you sort of, and the gym has, the, the gym location has changed and tweaked since the master-planning was done, but this gives you sort of what we were originally looking at and we've kind of crossed out everything but the field at this point that we, that we're doing at the high school. And then the next one just shows where the, the last project there on the high school campus, the auditorium, was planned to go. So last couple of slides here. So projects added, just refreshing, that were not originally part, but that weren't specifically funded. We've added the roof of the district office, the roof in the HVAC at the junior high NPR, the field replacement. Again, that's not funded, we're just, all we've funded is the planning. And then there is some tennis court rehab that we need to probably do and something that really hasn't been talked about yet, but the last piece at the high school is classrooms. You know, we kind of did the outside, we did the roof. We haven't done anything in the classrooms, carpet, windows.
In the main, yeah.
Paint, that kind of stuff.
And just to reiterate, the, the district office roof, none of that's coming out of bond funds? It's all coming out?
Part of it's coming.
Yeah, but cafeteria and then the high school rooms and the kitchen.
The cafeteria part will come out of the bond funds and, and yeah, so we're splitting out.
Right.
Because the district office is not that old, is it?
Yeah.
Did it get converted from something old?
Well, it was built in 1997.
Okay. Well, not as old as the high school.
Not as old as the high school, no. But roofs, I mean, you look at when roofs.
It's the first roof, yeah.
It's, it's the first time that it's been re-roofed. So just additional funding considerations I just wanted to mention. So again, we had the savings from the track and field, so that'll get doled out to some of the projects that we're already taking on. We are in line and we are approved for state funding based on the work that we did at the junior high in 2014 and 15 and for Phase One of the modernization at the high school. And those are the totals. The estimated, six months ago, we were told, well, we might get the money in 2028.
Oh my goodness.
If the bu, if the governor's budget changes the way we think it will, we're more in line with maybe 2022, 2023. So that's positive.
And that's not money. We've earmarked for anything at this point.
Not at this point.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to throw a lot of information to you guys. I think that's it. So any questions?
I had a couple of questions and I don't know if this is the time for them. I saw that you, we had tennis courts. Cause that came up last board meeting. Um, I was, there was a, a, a date mentioned when the tennis courts were last resurfaced. Was that accurate information?
No. So we did find that we did, it's a long, complicated saga of tennis courts in Healsburg, but the city built half of them and we built the other half. They were built to different standards. We had to have ours approved by the Department of State Architecture. The ones that we built and were in charge of maintenance on were resurfaced in two thousand three. Um, so that wasn't entirely accurate last meeting and we do have, um, an estimate we're going to bring in May to do resurfacing of most of the courts uh, this summer. So. And we were already engaged in that process prior to last meeting.
Okay, great. And my other question was softball fields. I know that was a question.
Yeah. And she just shared that field rehabilitation was, is earmarked as part of the third phase of our bond project. So that's been something that we've master planned from the get-go to address what we knew were some field issues for both baseball, um, softball. And while we've addressed soccer and the synthetic turf, but yeah.
Perfect.
Right.
Yeah, natural grass.
Yeah, lots of drainage and irrigation issues and, and, and infield for baseball, et cetera.
And that baseball field in includes that whole grass area?
All of it, yeah.
Okay, maybe that was part of your question.
Natural turf is really hard to maintain to, you know.
High standard.
It's standard, you know, you get gophers, you get all that kind of stuff. So those kinds of things happen over time.
I remember probably the cost of that size field, this baseball to the stuff, you know, that.
That whole.
For artificially, you mean? Yeah, the other, I mean, the real, another giant issue if you did synthetic would be fireworks on fourth of July.
Yes.
Right? Yeah. So let's not go there. Right?
Great. Thanks, Taya. Thank you so much. All right, we do have a public comment on construction update. Mr. Flores?
Thank you. I'll make this short. Um, although, um, I know that teacher input was given at the beginning of the architectural sort of design of this. Changes do happen and while you're constructing a new building and I just wanted to reiterate the fact that, uh, we like to be informed if those changes do happen. Mistakes happened, have happened in the past where, um, a classroom that was, that was, um, earmarked to be bigger ended up to be shorter and that was a shop class and, um, for example.
Art, art class, right?
Our ceramics class.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, it took like a fifty percent cut, over fifty percent cut in space. And our adjacent class ended up being huge for a class of twenty-five students versus a shop class. So if that were to happen again, uh, I would love for you to contact either me or someone on the HADA board to make sure that, you know, we communicate that sort of information with the, uh, people who are being affected. That's it.
Thank you, Ever. Okay, uh, moving on eleven point two D, board policy thirteen thirty, use of school facilities. Superintendent Van den Heewell.
So this is a first read of, um, new policy regarding outside users using our facilities. And there's a PowerPoint, I think. So I'm going to take you through it this, this month and then next month it would come back for action, uh, if it pleases the board. Um, you can go to the next slide there for any. There you go. So changes that are substantive in this policy. Um, we are recommending that we no longer charge Healsburg area youth-related nonprofit organizations for facility use. Primarily talking about gym space and, and, um, the synthetic turf field. Um, this is based on some optional recommendations from the California School Boards Association. Follows the lead of other agencies such as the city of Healsburg. They've stopped charging for using fields. And we, we really see ourselves as being a resource for the community. I, I fully, uh, recognize the presentation wasn't in your packet if you're looking for it, okay?
Oh.
Okay. Um, we recognize that our schools become parks after school in a lot of ways. And so we want the public to be able to access them and be able to use them to the fullest extent. Um, and so again, we would not be charging for facility use for youth-related nonprofit organizations that are based out of Healsburg. It's not going to be open to county-wide organizations, et cetera. Uh, we really want to benefit those in our community. When we need to have custodians on duty for whatever reason, you know, there would be a nominal charge or they'd have to cover the cost for the custodian and then lights on the synthetic turf field can be quite costly. And so there'd be charges for that. And for instance, soccer goals, if we have to get them out and put them out for them, there'd be a charge, et cetera. Um, but just for simple use, uh, we wouldn't be charging folks, which is a departure. It gets a little, um, it gets complicated. I can tell you the first couple of weeks that the synthetic turf field opened up, we could have have it, we could have had it booked with outside user groups the whole time and they would have been groups that would have precluded folks from using the track out of the community. Right? And so we did want to come up with a priority, priori prioritization, um, of how to do these. So school activities always obviously take precedent. City of Healsburg's, Healsburg area youth-related nonprofits, uh, and then we'll give it to non-Healsburg area youth groups and commercial groups, et cetera. And we are going to dedicate, we're going to make sure that we have some dedicated open times for the community to be able to get on the track. Um, there was a local lacrosse team who wanted to come and rent it basically every evening and lacrosse doesn't mix with folks on the track. So it was, it was going to be an issue. So we denied that. Um, wasn't a Healsburg area group. So, um, next slide, please. Rates. So you see the no charge for groups A's and B, that, those are the nonprofit groups, um, or school groups. And then group C and D would be, um, outside organizations not based in Healsburg and then for-profit organizations. And so the new additions to our rates are the synthetic track field, track and field, and the rates for lights use. So changes to the policy there.
That's an hourly rate? Did I see that?
Yes, yeah. Except for soccer goals. Let me go back. Soccer goals are twenty-five dollars a day if they need to use those. So.
Gotcha.
And that's primary, I mean, we have to buy new goals that get worn out, et cetera, new nets because they're used and we have to dedicate custodial time to be able to move them out on the field and prep.
So those are that school property.
Those are our, yeah, soccer goals, correct.
Okay.
And again, no charge to school groups or, uh, a nonprofit Healsburg-based group. So.
Food service staff went on duty. That means they would be supporting or helping these.
Yes. Says may apply based on use when not, so if, if they were, it's most likely we would not have an outside user group using our kitchen during a time we have food service workers already on duty because there wouldn't be room, right? So that, that kind of doesn't make a whole lot of sense. When on duty, there'd be no charge. When they're not on duty, we do require if you're going to use our kitchen space because of the cleanliness standards that we have to adhere to, that we have one of our trained workers be part of that. So, so they do have to pay for that. Um, and it has everything to do with, uh, health code. So.
Does that also apply to the culinary?
Correct. Yeah, also.
There's someone mandatory.
Correct. Yep. Next slide. I think that's it. All right. Any questions around the change in policy?
I think it's the right thing to do to support community groups and, you know, we have these great resources and if nonprofits and clubs can come in and utilize that and it benefits everybody.
It's awesome. Um, the last three weeks or so, there's a, um, primary Latino-based soccer organization that's been using this, the soccer field right after track gets out. And there's sixty kids of all ages out there using it. It's just fun to watch. So it's great to see kids actively out there. So eventually those are going to feed our programs. They're our students. Um, and so why not have them out there?
I'm curious, is there, uh, a current day cost sheet somewhere to look at or is?
Uh, I can get that for you. I don't, we don't have.
I'd be curious to see it, just if you wouldn't mind sending it out to the board. I'm, I'm curious to know what we are charging and now what we're going to be charging.
The only difference from current to now is the, the addition of the synthetic in the track.
Okay, everything else is the same?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Well, then that's fine. Okay, great. This was simply a report. Any other questions for Chris?
You have a public comment, I think.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, I do. Thank you. My apologies. Uh, Randy Parmeter. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Any other questions?
I think we're good.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, all right, moving on. We have some reports. Dennis, are you here for a HEF report? Did it warm your heart to hear those young students speak today? I know. Isn't it exciting? Thank you for making that happen.
Oh, it's, it's a pleasure. Um, I stand before you and, and I get jittery and nervous and I watched the presentations when they made their reports last month, I think it was. And to see their calm and their poise and their preparedness, it really is quite something. I didn't have that kind of internship back in the dark ages when I was in junior high or high school and as a junior, um, and I, I see the benefit of it. So it's great. And it's really nice to be here too. I haven't been here in a long time and I apologize for that. Um, we have been working diligently and hard to raise the monies that we have pledged to the district. And I'm happy to report that we're hovering somewhere around sixty-six percent of that promised pledge, um, for this academic year. Now that said, um, you know, we're well beyond our seventy-five, our, our three-quarter mark into the year and we still have some work ahead of us. Um, I could, I could fudge it a little bit and tell you that we know there's a couple of gifts that are likely coming in. But because we don't have confirmation, I'm not going to increase that percentage just yet until the, uh, the, the next board meeting when we, we do have those solidified. What really remains for us in all of the programs that we are supporting is our fifty thousand dollar pledge to the district for the K through five enrichment programs. If you've been around for a long time and know the history of HEF, we started, we became a foundation back in the day when the funding for enrichment programs was going away. And so parents rolled up their sleeves and said, that's not going to happen. So it's kind of taking us back to, to our roots. Um, and we were so delighted to receive the news from a very generous donor and supporter of HEF. Um, the family has put up a twenty-five thousand dollar match challenge to us that if we raise twenty-five for the enrichment program, they will give twenty-five for the program. So we embarked on that in a soft way where a few of us started to crowdfund, uh, online, either through Facebook or through our own website, um, hefschools.com. And we've raised nearly nine thousand dollars so far. So there's eighteen of, of the fifty, which is great. Um, we launched officially last week and we're going to continue the campaign really till it closes, um, the fifty K. But obviously, uh, we, we've got a hard stop, if you will, to, so the community respond by, by May fifteenth. So we're, we're very much, um, looking forward to, to those two things, uh, happening. Um, Chris had mentioned earlier that the Equity Task Force meeting is moved from April twenty-fourth. We are co-hosting along with Corazon and our very generous partners at, um, the, the, the two thirty-five Healsburg Avenue. Holly Fox, I think, is still in the audience. Thank you, Holly. Um, and the event benefits, uh, the Kinder to College Program. So the monies that we're going to raise are going to be the seed monies for next year's kindergarten class in the Kinder to, uh, to college range. Um, other things that are happening for us, it's that time of year where our programs team is working very closely with Aaron Fender on what it is that we'd all like to work together on for next year. Um, so we've got some really wonderful, wonderful opportunities in front of us. We all come together to take a look at those. We bring in our development team, the fundraising folks to say, hey, is there an interest from the community? And can we be successful? Um, and then our June meeting for the, the HEF board will vote on those priorities um, and make then the promise for the, the nineteen twenty academic year. So there's a lot going on. Um, we're still hunting for that executive director. We haven't found her or him yet. Um, there's a few people in the pipeline that we're very interested in. It's tough in the nonprofit space in Sonoma County. We live in a very expensive housing market. So it's, it's been a challenge for us to, to, to find that full-time person, but we have been so fortunate to have, uh, Laura Zimmerman on staff with us in a part-time capacity. Um, she, as you probably know, we've reported before, is the former executive director of the Sonoma Valley Education Foundation. And when she started her tenure, they were raising the kind of money that HEF is raising right now. And when she ended eight or nine years later, they were raising two million dollars. Um, so she knows how to build and grow and she's coaching us and guiding us along the way. So we hope that, um, when that new person starts and with her support and support from the board, we'll just continue to fund more programs for the district than our, our priority. So that's the HEF report. Any questions?
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you publicly as well, Dennis. It's, uh, I know you guys are, you know, feeling maybe a little limping along because you don't have a full-time executive director, but the partnership remains strong. Communication is wonderful. So thank you. And a little timeline, we'll be bringing for a proposed kind of what we're talking about in May forward to you, just proposal, informational discussion. And then kind of simultaneously ask their board in June and ask you all for, um, approval in June as well.
Thank you for outlining that process.
Yeah. No, well, you mentioned it, but just so they know what they're doing. You talk to your board, I'll talk to mine.
We appreciate the relationship with the, the district. It's, it's been a lot of fun. We are, you know, of fourteen volunteers. We are absent that professional staff person. That's okay. We're all rolling up our sleeves and finding every, every penny we can in benefit of all fifteen hundred of our public school students. We're really proud of what you do and how we support it. So thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis. All right. Mr. Flores, you're up next.
Okay, so.
Good evening to you, sir.
Good evening to you too. How you guys doing today?
Good, thanks.
Okay, um, so I, I don't have a written report, but I do have a few things to talk to you guys about. At our last journal, um, HADA meeting, we had a, a lot of discussions and, um, I just want you to know that, um, about ninety to ninety-five percent of all of our conversations that we have at our rep council meeting are discussed with the superintendent. So all the information that I'll bring here, it's, um, you know, it's already been heard by, by him. There's a lot of minutia here, so I'm going to skip through some, some of the most important stuff that I think it's of, um, interest to you. And if you'd like to know more information about it, you're, I'm just shipping email and I'll be more than happy to, uh, sit down with you for a cup of coffee or tea, whatever. Or your place. Anyway, so, um, some of our members are, were, were a little bit concerned about the district being opened up. Um, and, and I think having that conversation with the superintendent, clear a little bit of, of the misunderstanding that, uh, some of our members had. But that is a, uh, a, a sensitive subject for some of our members. So, um, uh, and I think we, we just need to keep that communication going with them. Um, as you may know, I did bring, uh, I did bring up the fact that we had a, an unusual number of unsatisfactorys this year. So, uh, the district in tandem with our, um, uh, association, we're thinking of working, uh, working together to see how we can best support, uh, first-time teachers. Uh, in, in, in a program that is not just an induction program, but something more robust, something more systemic. Uh, something that, uh, teachers will feel a little bit more supported than just a, an induction program. So, um, that's in the middle of discussion between the association and the district. Um, and like I said, a lot of minutia, we have a, a lot of MOUs to go through and we schedule a long meeting with our uh, chief negotiator back there and, um, our HR director here to go through, through all of those. Um, we are having a retirement party. We're going to say goodbye to a few longtime, um, members of the Healsburg Teachers Association and the Healsburg Unified School District. Um, I think it's public knowledge already, right? Who's retiring? You guys know that already? Yes? Uh, can I say that in here or no?
I don't know if it's public. They know.
They know, but okay, but I, I just want to say that we're, they're going to be sorely missed. Okay?
Oh, it's on a report. It is public. Yeah.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, we are going to miss them sorely. So Lily Fonseca, Janine Bingam, you know, uh,
Sylvia.
Costa and.
Sylvia Ramirez.
And Sylvia Ramirez. So, um, and we can't wait to like give them a, a goodbye party. And Lily said, oh, bring the tequila. So, uh, we'll see.
Not on district grounds.
Of course not. Um, uh, we are in the middle of, of elections for next year for our HADA elections. So we'll see if you get a new board. Never know. Uh, in terms of, oh, um, Brian Davis actually, uh, did his first CTA NEA presentation at our Redwood, um, uh, conference a couple of weekends ago. Uh, he's been trying to do something like this for the last five years and he was pushed and he, it was really well, uh, received. Uh, he had over forty-five people in that room. So, um, it was a, a workshop on how do I introduce twenty-first century uh, technology into the classroom setting. So. Uh, and he got the bug. He's going to keep doing that. So hopefully we won't, we won't lose him to, um, to, um, presentations or, or another job. In terms of, um, I, I think I mentioned to you guys that the district and the association are actively talking about the, uh, intervention services that are happening at the elementary level. Uh, that discussion's still up in the air. So we're still discussing that. And I think, um, I will read the, uh, the, uh, union position paper to you guys in, in May. Okay? Uh, any questions regarding my report?
No, but I just want to take a minute to make a couple of comments. I want to thank you, Ever, for the time you're spending with Chris communicating. I just thank you very much for that. And also for your comment about first-year support. I'm interested to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds, you know, I, not coming from a teaching position where you only get your first two years to sometimes, you know, yearish to make it happen.
Right.
Um, that always I found difficult for teachers. So whatever.
I, I, I really want to commend the district for being open to that idea. Um, because we have a teaching or a teacher shortage and, and if we don't give our new teachers the scaffold that they need, uh, we may not be able to fill those positions in the near future. So.
I appreciate your collaboration and that mindset. So thank you, Ever.
Well, thank you.
Uh, we do not have a student trustee report this evening. We will recess to a ten-minute break. Now. So start your, start your timer. Alrighty.
Yeah.
We are now moving on to.
I'll just say that. I'm sorry.
Eleven point three student learning. California data dashboard and mid-year local control and accountability plan update.
All right. So we should have done this in February, but I was at the CNI conference, CISC. Um, and so I wasn't at the February board meeting and then we were supposed to do this again last month. Um, but we had a board member that was very ill. So this is really coming kind of two months late. Um, we'll go through it. We'll go through it fairly quickly. You know, I encourage you to take some time with it on your own time, encourage you to look at the data dashboard and go through it. You know, it is a public website, California Data Dashboard. A little bit around timeline. Ooh, I got it to work. I'm magic. Normally, we would have done this in February and then what's happened over the last two months is that Chris and I have been out doing stakeholder engagement. So this presentation has been done in front of all of our staff. All the staff meetings have seen this presentation, been able to ponder, reflect, provide input. All the governance councils have seen a smaller version because, for their school. With this information, I'm visiting the junior high leadership class on Friday and the high school leadership class. ELAC, DLEC.
Yeah, we just did ELAC last week.
Yeah. So stakeholder engagement's been ongoing. What will happen in May is that I'll bring forward some summary documents for the LCAP itself and ask for some input. So I think it's important for you all trustees. I would hope that you review this in order, this is what is supposed to inform what we put in the LCAP. And I will, the next month, have a formal presentation, discussion for garnering your input on the LCAP. So that's a little bit of a foreshadow. So here are the 11 indicators of school success. This is good news in the broader scheme of things, right? We used to have a single number or average performance index. Everybody was shooting for 800 and it was all based on test scores. So this is welcome that we have multiple measures. They're looking at different things, but it makes it more complicated. So the nice thing too is that they're looking not only at status, but change over time. You know, one thing that's still a little frustrating for me is that it's change over from one year to a next. It's just one year of change. And everything I ever learned about statistics is that you looked at trends and usually a three-year trend is something better than one year of change, particularly a district of our size that's so small. And we'll talk a little bit about that in regards to the suspension data. So if you go on to the district data dashboard, this is generally what you would see. Happy to see our graduation rate has continued to rise. It's very high. We'll get into the details of this. Very quickly, I'm going to move from looking at it at a district level and to a school level. And the reason for that is, is that all charter schools, regardless of whether they're a dependent or independent charter school, have their own dashboard. So the children of the Hillsburg Charter School are not included in this data that you see in front of you right now. This is minus the 300-plus students in grades K through 5 who attend Hillsburg Charter. They have their own dashboard. So we don't spend a whole lot of time looking at the district data dashboard. We like looking at the school dashboard. So that's really what I'm going to focus on. A little bit of how to read this thing. Judy's favorite, I'm kind of sad she's not here to see this. Out with the pies and in with the gauges. And, you know, we'll see if this is a little bit easier on the eyes, better for ADA purposes. Red is bad, orange is bad, blue is good. So if I think about that, blue is the best. Green is happy. We get into the green and I'm smiling. Red and orange, I'm very concerned. Yellow, we have some work to do. So again, a little bit about how to read the dashboard. You get that performance color. Then there's some information on the website around what the status was, what the change was. And then you can click into these equity reports. So the equity reports have to do with your significant subgroup. So for us, that's English language learners, students with disabilities. We don't have a high enough number to get equity reports for foster or homeless. But we do get reports for students who are socio-economically disadvantaged. So SED is students who are economically disadvantaged. Some things to think about, whoop, when we look at the data, again, I mentioned that the status relates to the 1718 school year. So this data is nearly a year old now. They're getting better at refreshing it. We used to look at data that was two or three years old. You know, we anticipate that they'll refresh the data sometime in the early fall, late summer. So this data is nearly a year old and that one year of status change is frustrating. We're also looking at data where we had schools closed for 10 days. And I hear this across the county. I think you guys in Santa Rosa are feeling it more than anybody is that we really are seeing the effects in particularly the social, social emotional data that we're going to review of kids feeling uncertain, kids being out of school, their parents being stressed out. Mentioned the charter school data is not in here and, you know, we've had some challenges at the, at the, at the junior high. We had a one-year principal, a new principal now, and I think that's a little bit reflected in the data as well, that there's been some change in leadership there. Okay, so we'll look at the academic performance first. This is the English Language Arts. And like I said, it's important to us to look at school by school. So you have some summary data there over on the left. So all the students and all subgroups at Hillsburg Elementary went up in English Language Arts. We are still sitting in the yellow. So there's work to do. Hillsburg Charter School, all in the blue and green. Hillsburg Junior High, all students and all subgroups dropped. So Hillsburg Junior High is an area of focus both for academics and you'll see for the social emotional suspension data. And I'll chalk that up to, it is tough to be a junior high school student. We're seeing things at the junior high school level around social media, use of vape pens, a change in leadership. You know, Aaron Ryan and Chris Miller are doing a phenomenal job, as are the teachers. And, but there's, there's work to do. Hillsburg High, here's a fun one. All subgroups went up, but all students went down. Hmm. So what this is about is that we did not hit testing target. So we have to test 95% of our kids in every single subgroup. So when you look at the kids that tested, they went up. Everybody went up. But we are getting a 13-point ding because we only tested about 67% of our students and we need to hit 95. I wish I could give a shout out to Connie Marks. She's in charge of testing at the high school this year. She is rocking it. She is like a dog on a bone. I feel bad for those kids. She is chasing them. She's going to do it. I can't imagine that we are not going to hit testing targets with her in charge. She's doing great. So the good news is that all, all subgroups went up. We're in the yellow. And the reason it says went down is because we didn't test everybody. They give us this knock. They just take points away from us, basically. And you can see, I think it's important to look at how we compare to the state of California, that as a state, all the students are in orange and then the significant subgroups are in the yellow with white students. And this is the achievement gap that we see. So let's dive into it a little bit and some summary information here for English Language Arts. And this is guiding our thinking for preparation of the LCAP in terms of strengths and challenges. And, you know, what we write into the LCAP in terms of what are we doing? So we're implementing new English Language Arts and English Language Development curriculum across the district, pre-K through 12. We're improving our English Language Development Program, the Blended Learning Program. We've got bits of co-teaching with special educator and a, a subject matter specialist or a grade level specialist. Diane and I are working more closely together to, with the principals to try to have more co-teaching, particularly in some areas like math and science, where we, we want both those brains in the room helping kids, the subject matter specialist and the special educator. So, you know, things that we're focusing on is further data analysis with, with the junior high and kind of diving down into it. So not only administration understands the data, but as do the, the staff. I mentioned the participation rate at the high school. Math, we know this is an area where we need to do some work. You can see that we have taken some slips. The bright spot is at the high school. We actually had, I can never remember, was it eight or nine percent increase of the 65% of the students, 65, 60, 69%? I can't remember exactly, 60-some percent. So we're getting there in a nice little shiny spot in math at the high school. So I wanted to shout out for them. This has been the work for the last 18 months for our district in terms of academics. We've got some exciting things. We're starting to see some changes. I don't want to put everything in test scores. Our preliminary, our star data is showing some nice improvements. And, you know, as you know, having the conversation with kids about their mathematical mindsets and also helping the adults with our mathematical mindsets and that our belief that all kids can do math. They can, and we're going to get them there. So that's the work that we've been doing with Dr. Joe Bowler in the Navigator Schools in particular. So some summary information about how that data is showing up in the LCAP. I'll let you guys read for a minute. So any, before I move on to the other indicators, any questions or comments about English Language Arts or mathematics? Like I said, we'll do a formal input session for the LCAP next month after you guys have had a chance to digest this a little bit. All right, let's move on to college and career indicator. So this is the fun, how the state is telling us kids our college and career. This is complicated. You know, how, how, how do you measure if kids are ready for both college and career? So these are the measures right now. They're, the new I wanted to point out is that students who receive the state seal of bili literacy, and that's a bright spot for our district when I get into the, the data here. I'm really pleased to see that as part of this. And we currently don't have any leadership military science. This is, I'm going to forget the acronym. ROTC, thank you. Yeah, we don't have an ROTC program. So that's primarily what that is. Okay, so good to look at trend data, class of 2016, 17, and 18. So of the 130, 140 seniors, these are the percentages that are deemed prepared, approaching prepared and not prepared. So a slight dip and I'll explain what we think that dip is from on the next slide. This is testing, but we'll get into, the college and career indicators are based not only on tests, right? A to G completion, advanced placement courses. So there's a bunch of different criteria that could say you are college and career, not just the SBACK tests.
But it's still the junior cohort that you're looking at. Is that true?
No, this is your seniors.
Okay.
Yep.
Don't all the indicators require you be CAST proficient?
No.
I thought it was always.
No, so for, here, let's just skip to this slide. Okay. So here's, here's how it's broken down. So you can see in 2016, we had 144 graduates. 62 of those 144, so 43% were considered prepared. Then 72 of the 148 kids in 2017 and then 64 of the 150. One of the criteria is that first one, a CTE pathway completion plus SBACK met on the ELA or math or standard nearly met in another subject area, which is right now makes no sense. It eventually will be science. So the CAST test, the science test is, that's a placeholder for the CAST, which is the new science test that's coming on board. And then college credit. And we currently have not been correctly coding when our kids take college credits in our student information system. And you'll see, do I have it in one of these slides? It'll be in the LCAP slides. So on the district data dashboard, it says 0% college courses. We know kids take SRJC courses. We know kids are taking courses online through post-secondary institutions. We have not been correctly coding it in areas. So when it uploads to the state system, to CalPads, they don't see it. So we're fixing that for kids this year, but we can't correct data from years past. And this was. AP is good. AP, we're coding correctly. So AP exams are three or, you know, three or more. And that, that's a bright spot, right? We jumped from 24 kids to 32 kids, met college and career, prepared. So of the 64 of the 150 last year, 32 of them, right? So half of the kids that were considered college and career met it through the AP exam criteria. Our drop in that CTE pathway completion, so the CTE teachers, when I did this at the high school, were like, no way. We have more kids taking CTE. You got to take a CTE. And I think what this is about is we don't, the college credit, it, it's a CTE plus, right? CTE plus college credit, which we're not getting because we didn't report our data accurately. So we can't qualify any kids that way. And we have a lot of kids that didn't take the SBACK, that didn't take the CAST. So they may have completed the CTE, but that kid may have opt out of CAST. So we don't collect that kid in our complete, in college and career completion data. Does that make sense? Okay. So I don't think that's a true dip in the real data if particularly the SBACK data, we had full testing. All right. So let's look a little bit at it in the summary. We're excited about the AP exams. We have more kids, more diverse kids, more kids who are reclassified as English language, or as reclassified as fluent English proficient taking AP. And I mentioned that seal of bili literacy has increased and now with the new graduation requirement of two years, I think we're going to have more of our kids getting that seal as well.
I just signed that. It's, it's up again. I don't remember exactly, but it's, it's more than was on the last slide.
Yeah, so we had 19 kids, I think it was.
Yeah, it was in the 30s or something like that.
Yeah. So Aaron did a in-depth presentation on the LCAP and we don't, we won't have a color for this for at least a year because it's status and change. And there, so this is status, but there's no change. We also, so on the district data dashboard online, it says high school, less than 11 students. And I'm like, wait, what happened? We had more than 11 students test last year. We had about 30. I mentioned we have 21 high school students. We had about 30 last year. They were coded as Marcy Becerra Academy, all of our English language learners when the test got, yeah, right? This is driving me crazy. When the test got sent in, for some reason, those kids all landed in the Marcy Becerra Academy course, or school code. So if you go on the MBA, we think it's because of Toms. Yeah. And we're fighting about it. We're still going back and forth and they're like, well, it's water under the bridge. You can't fix it now. And it's, it's, you're not getting a color. And we're like, yeah, but in order to get a color in the future, if that data's not there, we're going to have a problem. So we're still fighting with, ETS actually now is who the fight is with. Yeah. Okay, so next one is about conditions and climate. So the suspension data, and I've mentioned this before, but it's worth saying that we would not like this to be 7.1% overall. But in a small district, when we have very few students and you have an event that ends up suspending a handful of kids, you see these swings. That said, and I know Diane is going to report on differentiated assistance. So we are receiving support from the county office for our suspension rate and also for math. And we've really taken the opportunity to get the experts from SCO and their time and time to work with Chris Miller and Bill Halliday to, to look deeply at this data and the root causes of what's going on. You know, it's in line and kind of hit the fast forward button for us on the restorative practices work that we've been doing. I think as we get more into the restorative practices, being a trauma-informed district and honestly, some of our implicit bias that we, that we need to challenge. And you can see that shows up particularly at the, at the junior high there. Being in the red, all students, EL, SED, that's socio-economically disadvantaged again, Hispanic students and students with disabilities. So I think it's important to, to compare. Oh, isn't that not in there? Why did I go too fast? Oh, no, didn't include it. I hate this clicker. Ah, I'm missing a slide. That's interesting.
Yeah, the comparative.
Yeah, I have a comparative.
We have it in the packet.
Yes.
You want me to run through it?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So our, just comparing suspension rates around the county. So we're, we were at 7.1% last year. The state average is three and a half. Cloverdale was at six, Windsor was at 5.6, Petaluma was at 7.9, Geyserville 7.2. So you see, we're, we're up. We're not where we want to be, but we're by no means far and beyond other similar districts. So.
I don't even think we have that one.
That's not in yours?
No, so it goes conditions.
Yeah, theirs is like yours.
Huh.
Yeah.
Weird.
Okay.
We'll forward it to you.
That's fine.
No, yeah.
You're looking at this one, right? You don't have, that's okay.
I can pass it down.
If you send it out to us, we'll be fine. Right? You guys, you're waiting to get it? Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, you know, the work that's showing up for us is around the restorative practices, trauma-informed, being a trauma-informed school district, you know, closer alignment between what Diane and I do, and particularly working with the principals at the junior high and the high school, to be, you know, very thoughtful about how we interact with kids, and that we're modulating as adults as part of it, right? And, you know, I have to say, Chris and I joke a lot about SCO and SCO Wonks, and, you know, you go to SCO to die. But we have received some great assistance and thinking and kind of protocols to help us think about our data and what we're doing with kids, so.
Yeah, really good, deep thinking.
Yeah.
Well, I'll just add, too. Yeah, I think that on this end, we see, we see the work that goes into the recommendations and understand the decisions that are made. But I think when you just look at it on a piece of paper, on a, as a percentage, as a number.
Yeah.
I think it gives a different feeling than what work is really going on, so.
Yeah, thank you.
And because we are so small statistically speaking, when, like Erin said, you know, particularly at the junior high last year, there were some problem behaviors going on, and a few of those can really up your rate, and so, not anything we weren't aware of, and stuff that we've been addressing, so.
But I definitely always feel like we have, though the action might be one thing, the heart behind it and the plan forward for those students is, I always feel is in their best interest and in a spirit of support.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're here, we're here to help you.
Absolutely, absolutely. And kudos to Diane for that, for sure. It's, yeah, it just, it doesn't communicate the same.
Yeah, yeah.
On paper.
So, the state has chosen to measure academic engagement through the metric of chronic absenteeism. So, academic engagement, state says, is measured by chronic absenteeism. So, a reminder of what chronic absenteeism is, it's when a child misses 10% or more of the school year for any reason. So, excused or unexcused absences, so in 180 school days, this is 18 days of missed school for any reason. They had mono for a week, took a vacation to Disneyland, decided to sleep in a couple days.
Ski days.
Ski days. So, not to say that we don't want to pay attention to this, but it's for any reason, so excused or unexcused. So, we're working with our families to make them aware of that, and when, you know, we get wind that they're gonna be going on vacation for two or three days and bringing families to Disneyland, we try to have that conversation about not only how it impacts the learning, but how it impacts our data. You could see, at Healdsburg Charter School, it went up for white students. It has gone down for all of our students and subgroups at Healdsburg Elementary and at the charter, and then up at the junior high. For right now, this is not a statistic they're reporting at the high school level, but we anticipate that they will.
That's interesting.
Yeah. So, the action, you know, the LCAP actions, I think the important stuff there on the far right, the related LCAP actions, is improving the communications with families and communities. As I've said before, implementing restorative practices and positive behavior intervention and supports. We've got our new K-5 parent outreach and education position that's been part-time at two schools this year. It will be full-time next year. Chris and I had a nice meeting today with the John Jordan Foundation and Healdsburg Education Foundation to talk more about that, moving to full-time next year, and the commitment that both of those organizations and we have to build that out more so, even than it has this year. And we got keeping kids in schools. Diane made a presentation about that. It's a new program for us. So, a bright spot, gonna end on the bright. Our graduation rates are nice and high. You can see how we compare to the state average, 83, 84%. As a district, we're at 91, 93% Hispanic. Pretty close there, 88 and 91%. We'd like to see that to be the same overall, but we're pretty darn close, so that makes me very happy.
That's great.
Yeah, that's good news there. Okay, so, I'm gonna just skip through this, because we just went. So, as I mentioned, we're gathering stakeholder input. What's happening now is this data is informing the LCAP. We'll come back next month to get your input on the LCAP, and getting closer alignment to the single plans of student achievement as well. There's a new template for that SPASA that requires us to get closer to what's in the LCAP, so the principals are getting there. Yeah. Questions, comments?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I know they're always changing this on you, so thank you for...
Yeah, and we're anticipating, you know, this is the end of a three-year planning document, and there's lots of talk about a very different template next year. And so, we're not making major changes. I was just with the Healdsburg Junior High School Governance Council right before this, and I said, you know, "We're not looking for input on our four goals at this point." But the, next year would be a time to think deeply and more broadly about what we're doing with our LCAP, because we're probably gonna have to rewrite the whole thing.
Yeah, new state superintendent, new governor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
And we will have, Diane will be presenting on differentiated assistance and specific work around suspension rates next month, so.
Okay, we'll be here. All right, 11.3B, California Day of the Teacher Superintendent Vanahue.
I'm gonna stay here, but we have, we do this every year, along with the rest of the state, and this is our way of proclaiming the great work that our teachers do. And, you know, in a lot of ways, the entire district, my job is to support our teachers, because they are the ones in the trenches doing the heavy lifting and ensuring that our students learn. So, this is our opportunity to do that. So, it is a resolution proclaiming May 8th as Day of the Teacher.
Excellent.
This is the day, yeah.
Thank you for doing that. All right, this will be a roll-call vote, but first, do I have a motion to approve? All right, roll-call vote, please, Ms. Debbie.
Aye.
All right, it passes. Thank you, Chris, for doing that, and thank you to all our teachers. You're here. You're here.
So, Classified School Employees Week is very similar, but they get a week, in just the way things are done. But classified employees, you know, they are the, often the first and the last people that our children see in the school day. They're the ones working alongside the classroom, cleaning the school to make sure that there's a suitable learning environment, doing a lot of the things that can oftentimes go unnoticed and is the most important work. And so, I think they deserve a week. And so, this is our opportunity, again, in a resolution, to proclaim May 19th through May 25th as Classified Employees Week.
All right, I will make the motion to approve. Do we have a second? All right, a roll-call vote again, please, Debbie? Aye. And thank you, yes, absolutely a shout-out to the classified employees. We do appreciate all that they do.
We have Cindy's here, so thank you, Cindy.
Absolutely. Excellent, excellent. All right, moving on to school business, we have 11.4A Superintendent Vanahue.
Yes, so, A, B, and C are actually all exactly the same, but pertain to different schools. So, 11.4A is a request for allowance of attendance from the state because of the flooding that we incurred. And then, B would be on behalf of the Charter School, and C would be on behalf of the Fitch Mountain Preschool. So, we have to do it three times, because we have three different entities.
But C's a resolution, and the other ones are not, is that correct?
Yeah, slightly different.
Okay. So, I'll take a motion on 11.4A, the allowance of attendance because of emergency conditions. I'll second, all in favor? Aye. I don't think we need discussion. Is that okay if I just move to vote? Okay. 11.4B, request for allowance of attendance because of emergency conditions, and this was, is this the charter?
The charter.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we passed that one. And then, the resolution, declaring an emergency closure due to flooding in Sunama County. I'll move to approve. May I have a second? All right, and a roll-call vote for that, please, Debbie? I vote aye. It passes. Thank you very much. Moving on, Healdsburg Junior High School Track and Field Project.
Yeah, so this is a contract for material testing as it relates to the junior high school track and field project with Brunzing Associates. So, they're gonna be doing engineering, geotechnical work. To be able to know how it needs to be engineered when it's built. Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so do I have a motion for the junior high track and field project, the research that's needed? Okay. All in favor, vote aye. Aye. That passes, thank you. Healdsburg High School New Gym and Locker Room Improvement Project.
So, this is with Laco, and they have to inspect and do materials testing on things like, say, laminate beams that, to make sure that they are correctly constructed, that the concrete was correctly mixed, that adequate wire is being put into the concrete, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's part of the building process for the junior high gym project. So, it's for Laco and Associates. Excuse me, yes, that's the high school, not the junior high.
This is the high school second gym.
This is the new gym, yeah. I was looking at the one right before. Yeah.
Okay, no worries. All right, do I have a motion for the locker room improvement project research? I will second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, moving on. And then, Chris, the last one, the fair.
The fair. So, we need to discuss plans for participating in the parade.
Well, I'm all in.
You guys have all waited for this topic.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should totally do it.
As long as there's no candy throwing, because you know that's not acceptable.
Never thrown candy, ever, yeah.
Only at each other.
So, do we have, could we get a truck? Does anyone have?
So, we have gyms, little green, 1970 Chevy pickup. It's a short bed, so it can't be very much.
We used it before, though.
We used the gold one. No, we used the green one. We did use the green one. Really clashes with the Hounds colors, but, you know.
Christmas, yeah.
And honestly, my husband ended up blocking a lot of it.
He can rotate.
Totally fine. He loves driving.
Okay.
Keeps him off the streets.
That would be dangerous.
Yeah.
We'll just ride along the back of the hobo group, the Healdsburg bike.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So, we will get you, we'll get you where to meet and when. And if Jim can drive, that'd be awesome.
Hay bale, so we should, we should get a hay bale.
Get a hay bale. Okay. And then, do we know the, I mean, do you know the theme?
Do we have enough swag to pass out? All right. We have to pace ourselves, because...
We do, we give it all out in the beginning.
We gotta pace ourselves. All right. All righty, so, this was just a discussion. All right, so...
Perfect.
Debbie will pass on the information to us as we get closer, as far where to be. Be there, be square. All right. Let's see, we have one last item here, of 11.5 personnel.
Yeah, so you recall, in March, we tentatively approved preliminary decision to not reemploy some certificated positions. It ends up being 1.0 position. It's broken bits of here and there. 0.6 of it is being vacated by folks who are retiring, so it will not affect any individual. There is a one, one teacher who's 40%, who would be laid off by this, but the person is part-time at 40%, and they're all at the junior high.
Okay.
And this is due to enrollment numbers. So, we have a large eighth-grade class coming out, and a smaller class coming in in sixth, so.
So, it's junior high, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, do I have a motion to approve? All right, this will be a roll-call vote, please. I vote aye. All right, resolution passes. Do we have any reports or comments from the Board of Trustees?
Good meeting, yeah.
I heard good things, yeah. Yes, very nice, very nice supportive email, absolutely. And junior internships, has it, have we had a meeting since then?
We had the FAST meeting.
Well, that was, oh, yeah, okay, that's why. So, that was delightful, again. So fun to go and hear the students present, so that was an honor to be there.
It's really board-related, but I had one of the academies, the one with Yosh and Derek, they came over to Healdsburg, over to Relliff today to watch a civil rights movie and have a discussion about civil rights, just to get out into the sunshine and walk over and get some fresh air and do their thing off-site and went back, so that was kind of cool today.
That was nice of you.
It was very cool, really interesting conversation I was overhearing.
Very fun.
Great.
Thank you for hosting.
Can I ask, what is the latest status of, or maybe we can't do this, of the inter-district transfer meeting?
We can't discuss it? I can tell you that we're... Yeah, so the meeting date didn't work, because we couldn't get all trustees, which was the 20, when was it gonna be?
June 17.
Yeah, so, right now, it's a June 17th.